Our meeting is back in session to those at home that are watching and waiting. We, I apologize, we had an extra long study session and we're ready to do business now. So will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This evening we have a number of presentations. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council and members of the audience. First thing on our, under our presentations tonight is a resolution of appreciation to Carol Peoples. Ms. Peoples, if you're in the audience, I'd like you to come forward. Thank you. Carol Peoples has served with distinction on the Southfield Planning Commission from 2003 to 2017. She brought particular, her skills in property development to the Planning Commission and gave very valuable input to the planning process. And Carol, tonight we just wanted to acknowledge your service and thank you for 14 years of very dedicated service. Planning Commission meets almost every week, Wednesday nights. It is a significant time commitment. And so this evening I want to present you with the seal of the city and present it to Carol Peoples and appreciation for dedicated service, City of Southfield Planning Commission, 2003 to 2007.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you? (APPLAUSE). Mayor?
Yes.
The people are trying to dig photos. Why don't you have her?
Why don't you hold your?
Yeah.
Didn't realize that, sorry.
Family and friends. Thank you so much.
Okay, and we have a box to put that in to keep it protected and a certificate as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
Excuse me, through the chair. Carolyn, before you leave, I just want to say thank you. I served with Carolyn on the Planning Commission for the last three years and it's been a pleasure. Congratulations.
Yes, go ahead. I've watched this city do so many wonderful things and grow and grow and I have been proud to be a part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you.[211.12][211.12](APPLAUSE).
I'm not sure, Mr. President, if all of my recipients are here now because I, some may have left, but if Gloria Hardy, Carrie James, Greg DeJury Jean and Rosemary Allen are present. Okay, well, Greg? Thank you so much. I'm gonna introduce you in a second, but first let me introduce the topic. We have, there is a foundation called Extra Mile America Foundation and they're all about promoting volunteerism, community activism, and then obviously recognizing the same. And so because we're not meeting on November 1st, November 1st is Extra Mile Day, so we have a proclamation this evening. And we did this last year and I selected a number of citizens last year who, and again this year, who by their, all of the things that they've taken on exemplify going the extra mile. And they, to improve their community as well as assist their fellow residents. So very quickly, I'd like to read the proclamation and then I'd like to talk about the four individuals who are mentioned this year. Whereas the Southfield is a community that appreciates when its individual citizens go the extra mile in personal effort, service and volunteerism. Whereas Southfield is a community that encourages the citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction of their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. Whereas through its various efforts to support the community in such things as the Big Rake, the Rock the Block Program, the Habitat for Humanity Repair Program, the Oakland Rebuilding Together, Southfield Public Arts, Martin Luther King, on and on and on. The Southfield community is one that chooses to shine light on and celebrate individuals and organizations that go the extra mile to make a difference, to lift up members of the community. And whereas Southfield citizens go the extra mile by demonstrating that one person can make a difference to bring about positive change. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kenton Cyver, Mayor of the City of Southfield County of Oakland State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2017, as Extra Mile Day in the City of Southfield. And we are honoring tonight Rosemary Allen, Greg DeJury, I always, DeJury Jean, Gloria Hardy and Carrie James for going the extra mile. And I, before I present the resolution to them, I'd just like to talk about each. First of all Gloria Hardy. Gloria Hardy lives in Ravine's neighborhood. She has been the neighborhood president, she's been on the neighborhood board, I've lost track of how many years. But she's active in the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. She's active in the Truth of Wisdom Foundation. She's an active member of the Southfield Parks and Garden Club. She's very active in Hope United Methodist Church. I see her everywhere doing many things, but she's also a judge for the city's Community Pride Awards that takes several days to go out and review the nominations. And this woman has probably the largest green thumb in the, in the city. Her entrance marker, her home, everything else that she takes on and especially through the Parks and Garden Club is extraordinary. So tonight Gloria, we're honoring you, putting the spotlight on you for going the extra mile above and beyond. Secondly, for Greg and Carrie who's not here, both Greg, Greg is the president of Bonnie Acres Neighborhood, Carrie is on the board, I'm not sure of exact office, but they're a twosome. And in Bonnie Acres, they have done tremendous, just above and beyond any, or any other homeowner association leadership does. Their continual communication with their residents through Facebook posts and other, other means is extraordinary. They went through the neighborhood for the last two years and signed up people for the Rock the Block Program. They did home improvements through Habitat for Humanity. They've, where they've had issues in the neighborhood park, they've addressed those and set up activities in the park. And I've seen both of these people walking their neighborhood with litter patrols, going out and on Saturdays and at other times with, with bringing other neighbors along with them and just keeping the neighborhood attractive and pristine. And for that we appreciate you both. And then we have Rosemary Allen. I've known Rosemary for a very long time because her children went through Southfield Public Schools and in Southfield Public Schools she was a parent volunteer like no other. Also involved in all of the PTAs, Brace Little, Levy, South of High if I remember correct, and also on the Area Council PTA. But for the last 15 years, Rosemary has been on the Parks and Recreation Board. She's on the Police Chief's Advisory Board. She went through the Citizens Police Advisory Academy. She's on the Superintendent's Advisory Board, President of the Tamarack Hiawatha Neighborhood Association. She's one of our emergency management crew. She dons the uniform and helps out at various events to control traffic or help people who show up. And then aside from all of what she's done in Southfield, Rosemary has gone on mission, missions to both Haiti and Africa as well as to aid the storm victims in Hurricane Skratrina and Sandy in relief efforts.[653.82][653.82](APPLAUSE). So I am very pleased to honor each one of you tonight. I know that you don't like the spotlight, but all four of you have done and you know, we greatly appreciate what you do to make Southfield a better place. Thank you so much.[675.29][675.29](APPLAUSE). Okay, next, um, next we have, I'd like to ask Roberta Kotman and crew. I understand you brought some people. We have done this resolution before and in the interest of time, Ms. Kotman asked me not to read it, but this is a joint resolution from, from the Council and the Mayor in recognizing United Nations Day in the City of Southfield, Michigan, and that would be tomorrow, the 24th of October. So Ms. Kotman, I'm going to present this to you and I know that you had some things you'd like to say.
Thank you to the Council and the Mayor for recognizing this essential, important day, United Nations Day. The Charter of the United Nations. We, the peoples of the United Nations, 193 countries, determined to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war which twice in our lifetime has brought untold sorrow to mankind. And to reaffirm faith in fundamental human rights, in the dignity and worth of the human person, in the equal rights of men and women, in the equal rights of men and women, 1945, and of nations large and small. To promote social progress and better standards of life in larger freedom. And for these ends, to practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors. And so, the Council and the Mayor, I present to you, your good neighbors of Southfield, who are determined to live together in peace. Our first presenter is Dr. Fred Pearson. Dr. Pearson is Director of the Center for Peace and Conflict Studies at Wayne State University.[885.12][885.12](APPLAUSE).
Council, it's a pleasure to be in Southfield, a city that has been a remarkable testament to cultural diversity in our community for a long time. And I want to just mention today the importance of the United Nations in our midst as an international testament to that. And the United Nations is facing some challenges these days. The United States has just withdrawn from UNESCO, the United Nations Educational Science and Cultural Organization. The U.S. position here, of course, is somewhat critical of some of the things that, that agency had to say. But at the same time, by withdrawing, as you may know, the United States pulls out of us, of an organization designed to preserve the cultural heritage of the world, the cultural heritage sites. And if we object to groups like the Taliban destroying these sites, then pulling out of this organization is not the most efficacious way to go about doing that, I'm afraid. So we have some challenges about the American position here these days in our foreign policy with the U.N. But I'm glad to say that at Wayne State, the Center for Peace and Conflict, we, we try to remind the Detroit community of one of the most important peacemakers we've ever had in the world who came from Detroit. And that is Dr. Ralph Bunch, the first person of color to win the Nobel Peace Prize, the first person to undertake effective mediation of the Arab Israeli dispute and bring that to a ceasefire. And Dr. Bunch went on, of course, to be Deputy Secretary General of the United Nations, to be an inspiration in the liberation of African countries, all, all the African countries, to be a pioneer in the civil rights movement of the United States, even predating Dr. King and his commitment to campaigning for equal rights. So what we do at Wayne State annually at the center is to hold the Ralph Bunch Summer Institute for high school students from our community. We bring kids from all over the region together across the lines that somehow, sometimes divide us and we've had wonderful representation from Southfield High School, the two high schools. And each year we, we bring them together and we take them to sites and community or markers of peace, historic community markers of peace, and teach them about diplomacy, teach them about settling disputes, teach them about diversity and handling diversity in their lives. So it's something that we're dedicated to doing in the, in the honor of Ralph Bunch and the history that that brings to our Detroit community and the distinction of having had one of the great peacemakers in history come from this region. So thank you for hearing us tonight about the crucial aspects of the United Nations.[1064.58][1064.58](APPLAUSE).
Our next neighbor is World Medical Relief. The CEO and Director is Dr. George Sampson, bringing the whole concept of medicine and health. Because if you don't have health, the rest do not matter.[1098.01][1098.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ma'am. It's my great pleasure to be here with the Honorable Councilors and the Mayor. Good evening. A short briefing about the disorganization that the World Medical Relief was founded in 1953 by the late Irene Oberlin. It started during the Korean War and this woman who started collecting food to help the orphans in that, in that orphanage 64 years ago. And we've been doing missionary work and during the time when Irene Oberlin started helping the orphanaging in Pyongyang, volunteers came and helped her out. Volunteers rescued Irene Oberlin for that mission she had dedicated in helping the less fortunate. We have local programs, it was established in 1966, which is the local affordable program which provides medication on, on a growing basis to low income people ages 18 and older who do not have insurance. In 2016, we distributed or dispensed more than 13,000 prescriptions for the low income locally. We have a durable medical equipment program that we support people who cannot afford to buy their walkers, comodes, crutches, cans and/or hospital beds which are not being covered by their insurance. We have a supply program for patients who are being discharged because of the, some concern in their, in their health insurance. We could also provide dressings, colostrum supplies, food supplement and other related items are prepared by social service agencies and home care workers. We also have hygiene kits, hygiene kits for the homeless shelters. We, we provided almost 15,000 blankets last year. These are for the, we work with the 93 social service agencies for the poor. Two years ago, we had moved here in Southfield. We used to have an old building in, in Detroit, which is an eight story building until the board decided to move to a one level building until a majority found and decided to move here in Southfield. And we have a future plan that we are going to establish of a five outpatient clinic to serve in the local community. And Mayor Severs was there a few months ago and we showed them the local programs we have. We also have international programs. We distribute medicine. These are the medicine that we collect from different, different companies. We also collect and distribute medical supplies and equipment from the hospitals in the states and will be distributed to the, to the poor in developing nations. Donors are the, like for instance Beaumont, Providence, Henry Ford, University of Michigan Hospitals, these are what we get for the past 60 years. In 2016, we shipped out 61 portable containers to the, to developing nations around the globe, including among others Haiti, Kenya, Tanzania, Angola, Somalia, Guatemala, Iraq, Mongolia, Nigeria, Sudan, Yemen, Mexico, Korea, Ghana, Croden, Nicaragua and Liberia. We also support medical missionary groups experienced by different churches and, and service clubs like the Rotary, Kiwanis Alliance Club. We, as a matter of fact, for next week, we are preparing to ship out two containers load of medical supplies to Puerto Rico. And all this good work is done with, with a minimal staff, but with the tireless volunteers which are the backbone of the organization. In 2016 last year, we recorded 2,884 volunteers that came here in Southfield. Between the span of 2010 to the present year, we increased to more than 1,000 volunteers. We have the retired health professionals, doctors, nurses, pharmacists and medical students from local universities such as the Oakland University, Lawrence Tech, University of Michigan, Michigan State and Udi Mercy. We are the largest in the state of Michigan and that we are among the top 300 nonprofit organization in the U.S. under the category of medical number nine is World Medical Relief which is now here in Southfield. The Metro Detroit Model United Nations Organization is excited to announce their collaboration with World Medical Relief here in Southfield over several other worthy causes to improve the condition of our fellow humans both home and abroad and abroad. Under the World, under the United Nations Foundation, good health means less hunger and poverty. We have a lot of good people who cares about less fortunate and we are here in Southfield and we are so very happy to be here in Southfield and we're getting more and more volunteers. Please come and visit us and looking forward to working with you especially here in the city. Good evening and thank you for inviting us and Ms. Roberta Kotman, good evening.[1448.15][1448.15](APPLAUSE).
Will you introduce your staff who have come today, join us today, please?
One of our board members is Bruce Carr, right there, retired educator. And we have also Anita Harris, one of the staff, who's also in charge in the medical missionary medicines.[1474.21][1474.21](APPLAUSE). And we have a visitor from the Philippines who is an editor and reporter who just arrived two days ago, Eric Jimenez. And he's writing the history book called Medical Relief and taking, he was taking a lot of pictures in Southfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presenters come from the faith community. Hope United Methodist Church, as a part of its global ministries, has always advocated for peace and justice. The United Methodist Church has a strong voice at the United Nations. The Presbyterian Church also has an office at the United Nations with a strong voice. Before the faith community speaks, I want to speak in regards to women and children that the faith community recognizes. The treaty called the Universal Declaration of the Rights of the Child, a child has Pam Granberry will talk to us about Once Upon a Child. And then you will hear from Barbara Tally, United Methodist Church and the Director and CEO of Presbyterian Villages of Michigan.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you again for celebrating United Nations Day. Although there are many vital parts to the United Nations, I am most involved in promoting the arm of the United Nations known as the Commission on the Status of Women. This is the arm that seeks to promote gender equality and the empowerment of women which affects the quality of life of our children. In my own little corner in Southfield, Michigan, I've been able to provide a unique and valuable service for women of all cultures. 18 years ago, I purchased a national franchise business called Once Upon a Child. We have provided gently used clothing, equipment and furniture at incomparable values. This service also includes payment on the spot for their gently used items that are brought in like new condition. Moms and grandmoms receive the biggest joy when they can provide for their little ones in great style while maintaining their dignity when returning those items for cash or trade. For 18 years, the women of the metropolitan Detroit area have embraced the clean and family friendly environment of Once Upon a Child of Southfield. We in turn pledge to continue empowering women with jobs and affordable shopping for their children and grandchildren. On behalf of grandmoms, moms and the children of this community, I celebrate you for celebrating United Nations Day. Thank you.[1720.86][1720.86](APPLAUSE).
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank the City Council and the Mayor for their proclamation for United Nations Day. I'm representing Hope United Methodist Church where the Reverend B. Kevin Smiles is the pastor and he could not be here this evening because he is teaching a Bible class, 200 people. Our church is presently celebrating 165 years anniversary here in Southfield, beginning with the incorporation of the Methodist Society in 1853. Can you imagine? Hope United Methodist Church, history continues to be written. We were just awarded the Community Pride Award, I think that's the second time. I would like to tell you about its global outreach ministry and how it ties in to the potential of diversity, the United Nations theme. The United Methodist global emphasis is on debt crisis, economic... potential of diversity, the United Nations theme. The United Methodist global emphasis is on debt crisis, economy, HIV/AIDS, human dignity and racial justice and slavery. Our mission work is local as well as global. Some are called to serve outside their country as pastors, teachers, doctors, nurses, social workers, a variety of ways through various forms of ecumenical ministries and interfaith. Our mature disciples had dressed over two hundred, sent two hundred dresses over to Haiti at one time. The United Methodist supports the United Nations. The world needs a new vision, a vision of peace, wrote it in justice, a vision of a world bound together, a community dedicated to the well-being of all people and all creation. The Hope United Methodist Church is engaged in peace efforts both locally and globally through its Peace Center. It has a peace pole on the grounds in the front of the church with four sides and the words engraved, "May Peace Prevail on Earth" in English, Spanish, Arabic and Hebrew. The Peace Center envisions a global community in a perilistic society where people interact peacefully and work together for the advancement of humankind. We train youth and adults in conflict resolution and peacemaking. The Peace Center members have done global work in Africa, Mexico, Israel and Palestine. Our global concerns are working toward the development and outcome of the two thousand fifteen United Nations Sustainable Development Agenda, which is to free the human race from poverty and want and to heal and secure our planet. The three dimensions of this sustainable development are the economic, the social and environment. And the seventeen Sustainable Development Goals and the one hundred and sixty-nine targets demonstrate the scale and ambition of this new universal agenda. They seek to realize the human rights of all. They balance the three dimensions of the sustainable development, that's economic, social and environment. And we proudly, proudly celebrate United Nations Day. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, Councilmembers, I'm representing Presbyterian Villages of Michigan, but I want to draw a direct connection between the founding of the United Nations and something that's happening in your city right now that's very important. Just three years after the United Nations was established, the United Nations formed the World Health Organization. The World Health Organization has done great things across the world since its inception in nineteen forty-eight, but about ten years ago, the World Health Organization decided to focus on what they called aging-friendly communities. They talk really about an aging-friendly world. And as you probably know, your Commission on Senior Adults is working very actively with AARP and with the World Health Organization to make Southfield an aging-friendly city and a broader community. Presbyterian Villages of Michigan has been very proud for the last ten years to have our home office in your city. We're just down the street on Civic Center in Loser, actually Hope United Methodist Church is our neighbors to the east. And in the last two years, we have been involved in two major programs in your city. Not only our home office is there, which serves over five thousand people across the lower peninsula, but we in our partnership with the Henry Ford Health Systems opened the PACE Program for the All-Inclusive Care of the Elderly Center in Southfield on Ten Mile, just west of Telegraph. And then in December of last year, we were invited by the new owners of the Park at Trow Bridge. I think most of you are familiar, the Park at Trow Bridge Civic Center, Burg Road, been there since the late eighties. We were invited to become the manager of the Park at Trow Bridge and we've been very, very pleased to be working with the residents there, with the families and the new owners from New York City where the United Nations is headquartered, to make the Park at Trow Bridge the jewel that it once was. Our executive director of the Park at Trow Bridge is here, Rochelle Upfall, Rochelle? And we invite any of you and the citizens of Southfield to visit the Park at Trow Bridge at any time along with the PACE Program. And together with your Commission on Older Adults, we will make Southfield one of the greatest places to grow old. Thank you very much.
There are others here. Would you like to let them stand? Southfield, these are your neighbors. Reaffirming faith in fundamental human rights. Practice tolerance and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors. Will you all stand, please?
Mrs. Cotman, thank you so much for bringing the entity of the United Nations and showing us the local interconnections with this great organization. Next I'd call on Greg Leschman, who has a presentation to make, I believe, that was generated in our Summer Solstice last June.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council for having me tonight. I just wanted to give a very brief summary for this year's Southfield Summer Solstice. For the audience, this is a five K run. This past June was the fourth, fourth solstice run. And also, what I, what I invented, and if you don't mind helping me hold this, is I wanted people that attended various Southfield events that I attended, including Eat to the Beat Concert Series, some of the public relations that I went on tour with promoting the run and the city, I wanted them to sign a banner and I'd like to present this to the city for, for you guys to put wherever you'd like in City Hall or wherever you deem it appropriate and we'll turn it around for the audience as well. There's approximately three hundred signatures on here and basically what it says is Southfield Means and everybody was just open to write whatever they feel that they would like to contribute to everybody to know about, about the city. I'll give you this side. Yes. And there's plenty of room for three hundred more signatures and we'll, we'll fold this Again, I'd like to donate that to the city and also I have a few storyboards of pictures that just show the various events and how much people was having fun, how people are having fun and all the various stages of the event. So the community relations, planning, wherever you would like to display those. Some of the comments I wanted to highlight just real quick, being part of a vibrant and diverse community, nice community and awesome library, lifelong resident, moved here at four years old and never left, my home for fifty-four years, love it, great place to live, excellent for recreational events, walkable, bikeable, sustainable, a bright future, great place to work. And just some quick highlights on the solstice run itself. There's three hundred participants for the five K run and fifteen kids for the one-third mile kids fun run around the concrete oval right on the front lawn. Ten city departments, actually it's eleven since I wrote this, I thought of one more. Eleven city departments that I worked with to help coordinate the event and of course the Southfield Chamber of Commerce, all of which were wonderful to work with and I applaud everyone's efforts for, for their extension of their time and their staff's efforts. We had ten event sponsors, we had six in-kind sponsors for the start-finish line and festival refreshments, we had four food trucks, we had eight vendors, we had fifty volunteers, we gathered thirty-four awards and gift certificates from local merchants for the top overall male and female finishers in seven different age categories from teens up to the seventies. So we gave the top male, top female overall winner awards, gift certificates, as well as a female and male in the teens, twenties, thirties, et cetera, all the way through the seventies. We had three mascots and what I'm most proud of is we donated to five charities equal amount, fifteen hundred dollars across five different charities. And we collected eighty-five pairs of shoes and donated those to the Souls for Souls Organization. Over the past four years that I've been the race director of this event, I'm pleased to say that we've raised seventy-five hundred dollars that's been shared across numerous charities throughout this, this area. And next year, we're already looking forward, so mark, mark your calendars for the fifth, fifth Southfield Summer Solstice date on June twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, which is the, I'd like to say the closest Saturday to the actual Summer Solstice, which of course everybody knows is June twenty-first, so it'll be Saturday the twenty-third. And I'm looking forward to working with all the city departments once again and the goal for next year will be five hundred participants. And of course, all of the spectators and loved ones that they bring to the city and enjoy everything that they have for that day. So that is it. Thank you.
And our final presentation this evening is from Bill Zagman of Government Services, our city lobbyist. Bill?
Keep my comments brief. My name's Bill Zagman. I'm with Governmental Consultant Services. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a quick update on some of the issues that are occurring in Lansing. Most, the biggest issue that's happening right now is conversations relative to reforming auto no-fault. That seems to be taking all the oxygen in Lansing right now. There are a couple of competing proposals out there that would get at the PIP, the Personal Injury Protection, component of your insurance policy, your auto insurance policy and cap the benefits at three tiers, two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand and unlimited. What we currently have right now is unlimited medical benefits if you're ever in an auto accident and there has been an effort in Lansing to curb those, to bring insurance rates down. A bill has been introduced in the State House, there's been a couple of hearings, there's also been a competing eleven bill package that's been introduced as well that is getting some play, getting some consideration. Number of things that the, the bills are looking at, fraud, attended care, fee schedules for services, coordination of benefits with your private pay insurance and Medicare. At this point, I expect there's going to be some action in the coming weeks before the legislature breaks for the year. Whether the votes are there on that particular issue are unknown, but I think the, the bill will be coming out of House Insurance Committee most likely in the next couple of weeks and then the real lobbying effort will begin. I think there's a lot of firms that are involved in the issue, but it's one we're paying attention. It's, you know, it, it does have an impact here in Southfield, it's not direct to municipal issues, why I'm here tonight, but it's, it's a big issue that's being talked about statewide. OPEB pension reforms, there's going to be the first of a series of hearings starting this Thursday on the Local Government Committee. I already was talking with Lori Siskin in the back of the room about that a little bit as well, but there is a, no legislation has been introduced at this point, but there's a growing interest with the legislature in trying to figure out how to assist, encourage, require, demand local units of government, address the unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities. Don't know where that will go, but it is something that, there's been a lot of talk. When legislation does get introduced, I'll be sharing that with Council and with Lori as well. Something we'll be watching very closely. Medical marijuana licensing, you may recall at the end of last year, there was legislation to create, if you will, the regulatory framework for the various tiers in the medical marijuana, grow, distribution, dispensary area. Created the two-step process essentially. The first step will begin December fifteenth when the pre-qualification applications will begin to be accepted by the licensing body at the state level. All that does, all that means is that all of those individuals and entities that are looking to get into or be, be licensed in one of the various tiers, they submit their background information, they pass a background check, they also have to submit extensive financial records for the state to, for this governing body to look over. Doesn't mean that anyone's going to be issued a license, what it does mean is that you're sort of like a home loan, you're pre-qualified. So if you take it to the next step, which is to get a license, you then need to come back to the board with a local license if the local unit of government decides to create an ordinance, a copy of the ordinance, as well as verification that you've been issued a local license under the local ordinance. Without a local ordinance, without a local license, someone would not be able to locate in that community, wouldn't be issued a license. So there is a connection between, you know, the local unit of government, should they want to move in this area, as well as then you bring, once you're, once the locals act and issue a license, then you'd bring that license and that would get you qualified and you would get issued a state license. The first, once, as I mentioned, applications can be submitted for that pre-qualification process starting December fifteenth. And once they, once that process is complete for those individuals who are in communities that have adopted an ordinance and issued a license, those state licenses could begin to be issued within the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen. There are personal property tax cleanup legislation that's still lingering, has a really long tail. We, the legislature addressed this issue a number of years ago, but there continues to be technical issues that need to be resolved as a result of the comprehensive legislation there. There's a number of ballot initiatives, we could be looking at a long ballot next year. There are eight different ballot initiatives that are seeking signatures at this point. One on gerrymandering, one on part-time legislature, we have two on minimum wage increases, paid sick leave, two recreational marijuana decriminalization ballot initiatives, and then an environmental initiative that would regulate the pipeline under the Straits of Mackinaw, the Enbridge Line Five is what it's more commonly referred to. The, I was at the city's Legislative Urban Affairs Committee on Friday and we had a very good conversation. There's a couple of issues that I'm doing some additional research and I'm glad I was able to catch that portion of the conversation at your work session. I'm doing some research for the committee on the NEZ, Neighborhood Enterprise issue, as well as delinquent property tax payment program. No decisions, no directions been given, but it was discussed and I'm doing some research to bring back to the committee at its December, I guess maybe November meeting, whatever the next meeting will be. And so I've been sharing information with those committee members that I've been doing the research for. So I'm going to stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to let you all continue on with the agenda this evening. Please know, you can always contact me if you need me to look into something for you at the state level, if there's any legislation that you hear on the radio or read or see online in your If there's any legislation that you hear on the radio or read or see online, and you've got questions about it, please, please, please give me a call or shoot me an email. I'm happy to help you in any way that I can. And again, thank you very much for having me here this evening.
Are there any questions? The one question is, came up yesterday, was the big-box settlement.
Sure.
From the dark stores.
Yes, the Supreme, the Supreme Court decided to not grant leave to hear an appeal. That was put forward by a Menard store in the U.P. There is legislation that really directs the tax tribunal on how to address these big-box stores and how to value them when they put these restrictions on their deed as to what they can be used for in future uses. And it was a win for local units of government, but probably not a complete win. We still need some more with legislation to frankly balance the scales so that local units of government aren't going to be bound by these unnecessary deed restrictions that big-box stores place in their buildings, which cripple the reuse if they ever leave.
Okay, so if you need any information from us, don't hesitate to give us a call.
Absolutely.
Because that's an important tax revenue that may have gone away. So at least we got partial settlement done. Okay?
Yep, thank you.
And I thank you for being here. Any else? There are no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor said that was the last presentation, but there is one surprise presentation. Mr. Breitman, if you'd come to the microphone?
Thank you, Council President. To the council, to the mayor, staff. I'm losing my voice, but for some people, that's a good thing. My name's Jonathan Breitman, and I rise and come forward to offer gratitude and respect to our current city clerk Nancy Banks for the admirable and wonderful job she's performed on behalf of the city of Southfield. These great efforts did not begin in November of nineteen ninety-nine, at the time of her election, but were preceded by many years of work in the clerk's office before that as well. I chose my words deliberately. Admirable means we admire you. For your dedication, perseverance, and skill in keeping order and stability. Wonderful means your input to the city has been a source of strength and purpose in accomplishing great things here. On behalf of my wife Leah and our daughter Riut, I am presenting a certificate which represents a tree that was planted in the Holy Land in Israel. The certificate reads, "A tree has been planted in honor of city clerk Nancy Malkacian Banks, wishing you good health and happiness. Thank you for your friendship, Jonathan Leah and Riut Breitman." Just as a tree has deep roots which give balance and nurturing, your roots in this city have provided much goodness. Just as a tree's limbs reach out and provide cover, you have always been there to reach out and help our community. As you begin a new chapter in your life, may God bless you and your family with good health and happiness and peace.
Well, Jonathan, you totally caught me off guard, but I would like to say thank you. Jonathan and I were both elected in nineteen ninety-nine. We served many years together, many interesting years. Thank you very much.
I would also like to thank Ms. Cotman for bringing forth the speakers on United Nations. It's one of those things that we take for granted, that we shouldn't take for granted, that we really need to make sure that it's an important part of our life. Moving into the next item on our agenda, we have the appointments.
Last week, Councilmen Cruz and Brightwell and I met, and we interviewed several wonderful residents who are willing to give of their time to the city. I hope some of them are, or all of them are still here. I will call them up in order of the commission. For the Administrative Civil Service, we have Mr. Ron Miller, Donna Sanders, and Shirley I'd also like to point out for this particular appointments, the term expiration dates are incorrect. For Mr. Ron Miller, the ending date should be October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. And for Ms. Lightsey, it should be October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. For the Building Authority Commission, we have reappointment of Mr. Perrin Emanuel. On the Commission on Senior Adults, we have an appointment of Dr. Latina Denson and an appointment of Ms. Cheryl Walker. On the Construction Board of Appeals, we would like to appoint Mr. Michael Cooper. For the Fire and Police Retirement System Board, we'd like to reappoint Ms. Audrey Harvey and Mr. Dwayne Garth. For the Total Living Commission, we would like to appoint Shania Jarrett and reappoint Patricia McMillan. And on the Veterans Commission, we would like to appoint Ms. Barbara Selden. Thank you.
Counsel?
How do you want to take it, Mr. President? You want to take all of them as they've been introduced?
Why don't we take Administrative Civil Service, Commission on Senior Adults in the Construction Board of Appeals?
Let me take all the reappointments, and I may approve all the reappointments to the various commissions, cities, Southfield.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by, who'd I hear?
Kate Wong.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, that we reappoint the persons as presented by Mr. Michael.
Ari.
Ari Maldabam. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move the appointment of the Administrative Civil Service. That would be three members that would be appointed.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Mr.
That's fine. Right well.
I want to know who's going to take credit for it. Okay. Ms. Morris, that we appoint the Administrative Civil Service as announced. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move the two members on the commission that are going to be appointed to the senior adults, the two of them individuals, raise your hand.
Support.
There you go.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we appoint the two members to the Commission on Senior Adults. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next one would be appointment to the Construction Board of Appeals.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the candidates for the Board, for the.
Construction.
Construction Board of Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
The next two appointments are, the first is to Total Living Commission, and the other is Veterans Commission.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we appoint the Total Living Commission and Veterans Commission candidates as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried.
Thank you, and if we can have.
Madam Clerk?
Thanks for offering to serve.
Once you're signed in and are sworn in and then signed the book, would you come up and greet us all? And we will greet you.
I'd forage my phone to come up.
Pardon? Yeah. Come down.
Why don't we go down?
Yeah, we'll come down. We'll come down there.
If everyone would like to raise their right hand. Nearby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State, and the Southfield City. That you will faithfully perform the duty in order of the commission of the U.S., appointed and or reappointed to the Department of City of Southfield Committee of Health and Public Health. If there's any questions about your.
I do.
If you'd just sign right here, please. Mm-hmm. Shirley, if you want to go, Shirley? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on retirement.
Thank you. Harvey. Right here?
Thank you.
Do I just sign anywhere?
Yeah, right here. Uh-huh.
I'm a lefty, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, here you go.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Right here, please.
Sign. Right on his line.
Have him sign on that check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could come back when you're through.
Had you signed? It's fine. This is another one? Right here, please.
That's okay. Yeah.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Right here.
Commissioner, or just folding away?
Whatever you want.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Very nice. I've been here since you've been here.
Okay.
I have a cell phone.
You read it.
Okay, sorry. I mean, I thought Lloyd, Lloyd told me he was going to send it, but apparently the mayor said he never did. I mean, I just hate to go unresponded to.
Yeah, right.
But whatever you think.
You read it.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time reading the small print.
Okay, all right.
That worked. That worked. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Focassi.
Let's speed things up a little bit. Regular meeting of September eighteenth, regular meeting of September twenty-fifth.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the minutes of regular meeting of September eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. We have no consent agenda items for discussion. Does anyone want to pull any item on a?
Item G.
Pardon?
Item G, please.
Item G. Item A on our consent agenda is the Parks and Recreation Registration System cloud-based upgrade. And for the last twenty-five years, the city clerk, the clerks, or the city Parks and Recreation Department has utilized the class software. And it has its benefits, it has its downfalls, but we want to upgrade it so that it makes it more efficient for the Parks and Rec to schedule classes, schedule events that are, that take place in the Parks and Rec Department. The total upgrade cost, including the one-time setup, training, and hardware cost, is thirty thousand dollars. Item B on our consent agenda is the approval of the library to purchase infrastructure maintenance and software licensing from Ultra Level Incorporated. And again, this is a system that we've been using for a number of years. They've increased the price to take it to the point where it comes before council. And the total cost is twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Item C is establishment and capitalization and interest fee deferred revolving loan program to assist low-to-modern income homeowners with septic-to-sewer connection and well-to-city water connection. We've been talking about that for a number of weeks, and we have worked with the residents on, especially on the west side of the city, to come up with an agreement, a cost-sharing agreement, that will allow the persons that are on septic systems to connect to the city water and city sewer system at a reasonable price. There will be a meeting on Wednesday at Levy School on Nine Mile Road to discuss this in detail. There will be a presenter from Oakland County to talk about the whole system and how it works and answer any questions that people have. So if. that will allow the persons that are on septic systems to connect to the city water and city sewer system at a reasonable price. There will be a meeting on Wednesday at Levy School on Nine Mile Road to discuss this in detail. There will be a presenter from Oakland County to talk about the whole system and how it works and answer any questions that people have. So if you're interested, be at Levy School on Wednesday evening. It starts at 6:00 p.m., I believe. Isn't it, Mr. Mayor? Six, six o'clock? Okay. Item D is to authorize a contract for fixed base meter reading system. This is for water meeting, water meters. Today, we, we read the meters by driving a truck with a receiver in the truck around the city on a regular basis to pick up the water readings. And we found a better way of doing this, and it will be a fixed system, which will be mounted on poles. It will be the same meters, it will be the same readings. The cost savings to the city is the fact that we won't have an employee tied up driving around the city reading the readings that come from your, your meter. It will also be a better deal for the businesses and residences because they can set up their own... It's a meter, reading from the meter, so they can, they can set it up so if they're going on vacation, they can set it for a certain amount of usage or no usage, so that it will bring it to attention someone if, if one of their devices in their, in their home, whether it's a toilet or a faucet or something, starts to leak and uses more water than anticipated. So we will be installing that. And the cost is $39,422.66 with a, an added fee to make it a total of $433,869.22. The next item is E. It's a receipt of bids to, for resident flooring for the DPW Garage Facility. And the maintenance garage has a floor that has been there for a long time. It's very difficult for it to keep clean and looking good. So it's going to have coating put on it and epoxy coating put on it. And the low bidder was Cipriano Coating Technology of Sterling Heights, Michigan, for a cost of $346,750. Item F is the award of the contract for demolition of Target and Firestone Buildings at the former Northland Mall. And we talked about that earlier this evening. And the, we are bringing the bid to the council this evening. The funds in the total of amount of sixty, or $658,547.50 are provided in the General Fund Support Services account. I've pulled item G. Item H is the Northland Mall Environment Abastis Abatement Change Order. And when the, the abatement, when the abatement for the asbestos was being done, they found an area that was a surprise to everyone. We didn't realize it was there. No one realized it was there, and they found it. And it's, and it will add an additional cost to the, the contract. And the council will authorize $1,218,000 for the change order request related to the Northland asbestos. But our, our estimate was very high, so we're still well within our budget on this asbestos removal. There was one other one, and it's for the city of Southfield to accept the EDA grant for the Smart Zone to the, the grant is for $1,253,230. I need a...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to approve the, I'm making a motion, we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and I.
Do I have a second?
Report.
Report.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and I of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Ms. Taylor, you asked to have G pulled?
Yes, just for discussion. I, I am in full favor of this, having the reports to be generated. But in our study session, I thought we had some amendments or some changes that I don't see on here, where we were going to have parameters like put around, put around certain things, like if you wanted something, I believe, from, like issuance of licenses or certificates or termination dates or like if a liquor license expires, if you wanted them within 30 days, 60 days, or you wanted five years, or what were you looking for? And I don't see that in here. And I, and I also thought we discussed having the information to the full council and the mayor.
And that change is made?
I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
It's on the bottom.
Okay.
It's at the bottom.
Right, the bottom of each of sub, subsection one and then section two as well.
Got it.
The language was added, "The Finance Committee Chair will forward the monthly city clerk's report or the city treasurer's report to all members of the council and the mayor." So that was added.
Thank you. And the other piece?
I, I guess, I'm not sure where the consensus of council was on that. That's the only one, it was my understanding that there was a full consensus on, to, to modify, so.
Let, let me just, from a standpoint that those items will be reported on because they, they are significant for the Finance Committee and also for the Administrator and for purchasing. That the contracts notices will be coming up. What, whatever's coming due in 30 days, that will be reported out. And I think there's some, that, that is a detail that will be, in essence, will be reported out because moving, moving forward, I've spoken to, let's say, other city clerks around the metro area, and that is something that, that, that they actually do. But we had, we would have to merge purchasing with what we have in the city clerk's office. So there, there will be some work that needs to be done on that, but, but it will be reported out, shared with, shared with, you know, obviously shared with the Finance Committee. But also, when we report out other items to the mayor, to the city council, those items will be addressed. And/or making sure that we refine that, that report the way it should be as we go on.
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I agree. We will, the information is important. I'm just saying that, do you want someone to give us a report for 30 days, 60 days, or however long? And I don't know what's involved because it could be a database and they print a report. I, I'm not familiar with what the treasurer or the clerk may have to do.
Right.
Okay, why don't I, why don't I do this? This is a, a resolution, and it's, it's written by the action of the council, can be changed by the action of the council. And I don't think anyone sitting at, in these seats knows exactly how this is going to work. This, for sure, in, in minute detail. So at this point in time, this is the best that we know. Once we start using it, if it needs to be modified, we can modify the resolution. So it, it's not a, it's not a, written in stone.
Okay, so you're saying it's a work in progress?
It's a work in progress that will obviously be modified as the treasurer or the city clerk starts working with these reports with the council and the administrator, so that if it's not working, we can change it. So, but this is, sitting at a table, writing a, writing a resolution, writing a, a document, it's something that we're doing the best we can at this time. But the real value is how it works when it starts to be applied.
And I agree, except that we might be putting a burden on somebody that...
And that's why we might change it.
Okay.
So we can, you know, the city clerk or the treasurer may say, "Well, wait a minute. This has taken up, you know, three people's time."
Mm-hmm.
So we need to back out, back off on that and say, "Well, what do we actually need?"
Mm-hmm.
So, but in order to get anything going, we've got to pass a resolution.
Okay.
And then we can work on it as a work in progress.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now I need a motion to approve the resolution.
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman? Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the resolution establishing additional duties for the city treasurer and the city clerk, with full understanding that it's a work in progress. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing.
Thank you, through the chair. Our first and only public hearing is PSLU 17-0008, a special use request of 21170 East Eight Mile Road LLC, on behalf of the owner, KBY Inc., to establish a Mr. Allen's Men's Bootery Retail Warehouse and Distribution Center on property located at 21170 and 21200 West Eight Mile Road. This item was before the council at their study session last week. I do have a brief video to introduce the topic, and then I would like to invite the applicant representatives to make a few statements before the public hearing is opened.
Okay. If you'd come to the microphone and give your name and address for, the business address for the record?
We're going to do the video first, okay?
PSLU 17-0008 is a special use request of 21170 East Eight Mile Road LLC, on behalf of the owner, KBY Incorporated, to use the existing parcels and building for retail warehouse and distribution center use within the I-1 Industrial District. The property is located at 21170 and 21200 West Eight Mile Road, on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Lasser and Evergreen Roads in Section 34 of the city. The subject property is zoned I-1 Industrial. Properties to the north are zoned R-1 Single Family Residential and IL Light Industrial. Property to the south across Eight Mile Road is zoned for commercial use within the city of Detroit. The properties to the east are zoned R-1 Single Family Residential and I-1 Industrial. And the properties to the west are zoned I-1 Industrial. With regard to the existing land use, the subject property was formerly International Wholesale Incorporated. To the north is parking behind the building for the subject property. To the south across Eight Mile Road within the city of Detroit is Popeye's Fried Chicken. To the east is the existing Gardner White Furniture Store. And to the west is a vacant lot. The site contains 7.69 acres of land with 435.41 feet of frontage on Eight Mile Road and a depth ranging from 495.31 feet to 883 feet. The special use request is to allow the properties to be used as retail warehouse and distribution center for Mr. Allen's within the I-1 Industrial District. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were: the special use standards and conditions of Article 20 Industrial Districts; the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan notes industrial use for these parcels; and the petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
Thank you. Good evening to the council, the mayor, and the public. My name is Jacob Bishop, and I am the CEO and co-owner of Mr. Allen's. Mr. Allen's was, is a retail chain, and we've been in the Southfield community for 43 years. We were founded in Southfield by my father, Allen. I, I actually grew up in Southfield, played hockey for Southfield. So Southfield is very important to our family and very important to our business and very important to the company. We've, we've been, our headquarters has been in Redford for the past 10-plus years, and this opportunity came up in Southfield, and we wanted to take advantage of it. Mr. Allen's has been here for 43 years, and we have a, we have a very elaborate and a very clear vision of what we want to do with this space here. We, we have a vision to make Southfield our, our headquarters for the nation. We want to, like the video said, we want to make a flagship retail location there. It will be one of our most beautiful retail locations. Also, we want to do our office and our warehouse there. Mr. Allen's currently employs about 500 employees. Some of the, most of those in the retail stores at our Southfield location. Southfield currently is a top location for us and also a top-employed personnel for us in the community. Southfield's been very good to our business. Southfield's been very good to our family, and we are waiting for the right time to expand, which we've been doing rapidly recently, to move back to Southfield. We, we, we believe with moving to this location and making it our regional headquarters or our national headquarters, our office and our warehouse staff should double at that point. Currently, housing just south of 70 people, most of which are very high-paying jobs. Any, any questions from the council?
You have a seat or...
Sure.
This is a public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to speak on it at the public hearing, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm in support of this project because the spot that they want to put their warehouse and distribution center has been an eyesore on Eight Mile for quite some time. I just have three questions that I'm going to ask through the chair, and maybe I can get these questions addressed the next time someone from this company would speak. The first question is, are you going to be asking for a tax abatement or a brownfield tax credit for this spot? Number two, are you going to be hiring Southfield residents? A diverse group of Southfield residents to your new business warehouse distribution center? And I don't know if it's possible, but there's a gas station at Eight Mile and Evergreen, and there's a problem there with the bus stop and the lack of parking and moving in and out. So if it's possible to move the bus stop, would you be opposed to having the bus stop put in front of your wonderful new facility? So those are the questions that I have. I think it's a great idea that you want to take such a property and put a state-of-the-art business there. And if it's going to look like the drawing, it should be a beautiful site. Just make sure you address and have enough handicap parking. And in the famous words of Councilman Myron Frazier, the chair, are your doors going to be handicap accessible? So that's a great thing. If not, tell us why, and will you reconsider that? As well as your restrooms? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the, as the public hearing? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fracassi.
Yes, I just wanted to say it's a great plan, and I'm glad to see that it's being built in Southfield. The only thing that I would add, if possible, is, is, you know, Eight Mile really needs some tender care. And, and I'd like to see, if possible, that there could be some kind of... of more landscaping. I don't know, um, retreat in the big parking lot. I guess I'd leave it up to you and work it out with the planner, but the building looks great, the showroom looks great, and, and it's gonna be in addition to Eight Mile Road development, but I sure like to see a little more landscaping, if possible.
Mr. Brightwell?
I'm a hundred, a hundred percent supportive of all businesses that, um, are in Southfield, and I'm extremely supportive of the ones that started here in Southfield. I think since I've been on council now for about a year and twelve months, uh, a year and ten months, we've had several businesses that are, that were started in garages, and they are now multi-million dollar businesses, and I think the support of this council and also the support of, uh, the community of those businesses should continue, and I'm a hundred percent supportive. I'm glad you, uh, decided to, um, uh, open up this particular lo, location here in Southfield, and clearly, uh, we appreciate all the fine apparel that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Manalbaum?
Um, just to piggyback off what, uh, Councilman Fracassi said, you know, with, in regards to the landscaping, I do see that just west of your building is a whole grassy area, um, but it looks kind of plain.
Yes.
Uh, it'd be nice if it could be, maybe be brought up with some maybe trees around the border, or, you know, something just to add a little bit, a little bit more than just, uh, what, on the planet, it just looks like, uh, some grass, so...
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
You're here just looking at the merits of the special land use. Because this is an industrial district, this will be taken care of administratively from the planning department, we'll be addressing these landscape issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
I just too want to say that I, I too am in support of the new facility. Um, my family and I, we've shopped at your facility on Southfield Road on numerous occasions, and you guys have a lot of great stuff there, so I'm looking forward to see what, what the new facility looks like on Eight Mile.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, let me ask the city planner...
Chair.
...a question. A special use is still able to make somewhere, put some landscaping in.
Yes, you can make that as a condition.
I know it's just special use tonight, but...
Yeah, that's, that's a reasonable condition, and...
But I just need, uh, Eight Mile Road to start perking up a little bit.
Right. I just wanted to point out why we didn't go through a detailed site plan review.
Yeah.
But that's a reasonable condition.
That, that doesn't come before the site plan committee, though, does it?
No.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're gonna get oil in the water now.
Okay, I would also like to, uh, commend you for moving back into Southfield. Uh, as you, uh, have heard tonight, how many people love the city of Southfield, and the council is working real hard to make sure that the doors are open for the people that, that love Southfield and want to come in and, and make us even a better community, and, uh, if you're, any place, if you do, uh, anywhere as nice a job as you have down in Redford, uh, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a place as turns head, but I hope not for more than two seconds at the speed they drive through.
Of course, of course.
So, um, there were some questions that were posed by one of the speakers, or the speaker, if you want to respond to that.
If I could, though, I, I'd like to address the third comment about the bus stop.
Sure.
That is a D-dot route, it's an M-dot road, and the determination of where bus stops are placed are based on, um, transit propensity, which includes density, um, route location, safety, and other factors. So, um, if there is a bus stop located in front of a property, we always make sure that a proper key walk and accessibility is provided, but it's not an option of the applicant, whether or not they say yes or no as far as location. So, I just wanted to address that, you don't need to address that issue.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
He's gonna respond.
Okay, great. Uh, the question in regard to landscaping, both in the unused parcel on the property and the used parcel, uh, landscaping is gonna be very important to us. That was one of the first aspects we thought when we were considering purchasing the property. Uh, it's gonna be very important for our customers and the city to have a pleasant place to shop, as well as attract new talent to our company, and landscaping is gonna be a very big part of that. Uh, to talk on, uh, potentially hiring more people that I was talking to, to the company, both on the retail and on the distribution center, of course, we're gonna be looking at the Southfield community to hire people. Uh, currently, in our, uh, in our current property, we do have a lot of Southfield people employed, including some of our highest, uh, waged earners in our company, uh, so we're gonna continue that trend, uh, in the new property, of course. Uh, and then quickly to touch on the bus stop, although I don't have much of a input to the council, of course, we would want that, it would help our staff get to work, it would help our customers get to the property, and it's something we really value in, uh, location, especially a warehouse location. Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Fracassi, you have...
I'd like to make a comment, besides the ones I've already made, that we have an Eight Mile Road Boulevard Association, and we'd love you to join in and get involved in it, okay?
I'd love to be involved in that, of course.
Lefoni all the way to the lake, so it's thirty-seven miles of Eight Mile Road under that association.
It'd be an honor to be a part of that.
Okay?
If I may?
And, uh, if I may?
Go ahead.
There was a question about tax abatement. Uh, that's something that has, uh, not been on our radar at all. Uh, we've, you know, our main purpose of the property was to move our facility there, so it's something that's not been considered at all.
Okay?
Um, just, just for full disclosure, this was presented to the planning commission when I was still on the planning commission, and the plan was wonderful then, it's wonderful now, so I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fracassi.
I move that special use request, PSLU one seventeen zero 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 eight be approved.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Fracassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve, uh, special use request, PSLU one seven dash zero 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 eight. Any more discussion? Did you? Oh, you, I saw your hand, I thought you were raising your hand, okay. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried.
Thank you, counsel.
Congratulations. Next item on our agenda is a site plan, PSP one seven dash zero 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 five.
Mr. Chair, can I, just, to the city planner, before we start the next, the site plan, um, you meant, we talked about the D-dot, um, bus stops that we really have no control over, and there's been another business, I know we've had this conversation before with, um, some of those bus stops and littering and loitering. Is there a way that we can maybe have a, a discussion with D-dot about some of their bus stops?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, and we, we have an ongoing relationship, especially, um, with Northland Mall. We've had more access in, in conversations with both D-dot and SMART recently, and all I was, I was pointing out is that the jurisdiction about the bus stops is a D-dot on Eight Mile and M-dot issue. That, that's not to say that we can't contact them and talk to them about specific issues along the route.
Right.
And if, if the applicant had indicated that he's in favor of the bus stop, we'll relay that information to D-dot, but they still have to meet certain thresholds as far as where the, where they're located and whether or not it makes sense for them to add a stop.
Right. I just, you know, in our previous discussion, you know, there was, there's other issues that I think are, not just the location of the bus stop, but some of the, the maintenance, and I think that if we...
And if I could, I think this is a, an item that I'd be happy to discuss further with the council at a study session.
Yep.
Because there's, um, we're definitely in favor of non-motorized transit and promoting transit, um, and it's better left said to a, a meeting that we have more time to discuss.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Is the area that you're talking about in the Eight Mile area?
It's on Eight Mile between, um, um, just east of Southfield Road. The business owner, um, has had numerous issues with the bus stop that's located in front of his business where it's not being kept up, there's loitering, there's littering, and unfortunately, Southfield Code Enforcement is ticketing him for all the littering, so he has employees go out every day and picking up trash left at the bus stop because it's, it's flowing, or it's, the wind is blowing it into his property, so he's, uh, let's just say he's not that, that happy with that particular bus stop location.
Well, I would, I would just hazard a guess that it may be an issue for the Eight Mile Boulevard Association to look into, because they're interested in keeping the place looking sharp, so, so, but, let's move on. We have the site plan?
Yes, through the chair. PSP seventeen dash zero 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 five is a site plan review request of Jonah Construction on behalf of the owner, American Properties LLC, for the construction of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred gross square foot auto-liv corporate headquarters and office and research facility with associated parking, properly located on Sidwell Parcels two four one eight four seven six zero zero nine and two four one eight four seven six zero zero one, uh, American Com, Commerce Center. I have a brief video presentation, this also was, um, brought to the site plan committee.
Okay.
PSP seventeen dash zero 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 five is a site plan review request of Jonah Construction Company LLC on behalf of the owner, American Properties LLC, to construct a one hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred gross square foot office and research facility on property located on the south side of American Drive between Eleven Mile and Franklin Roads in section eighteen of the city. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned RC Regional Center. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is currently undeveloped. To the north is a landscape buffer with the Extended Stay America Beyond. To the south is a heavily wooded landscape buffer. To the east is the existing American Center Building, and to the west is an existing office research building within the American Commerce Center. The site contains ten point four six acres of land with seven hundred and fifty-six point five one feet of frontage on American Drive and a depth of approximately nine hundred and eighteen feet. The proposed site plan indicates the construction of a one hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred gross square foot auto-liv corporate headquarters and office research facility with associated parking. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were: the site plan standards of Article fifteen RC Regional Center. The Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan notes office research for this parcel. And the petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
If you'd give your name and business address for the record?
Uh, good evening, Frank Jonah on behalf of Ameriscent Properties, three nine five three three North Woodward, Bloomfield Hills, four eight three oh four. Thank you, um, and, uh, on behalf of the Jonah family, we appreciate the opportunity to present this wonderful project in the city of Southfield. Uh, Auto Liv will populate this building with six hundred employees, six hundred plus employees. Um, we are, um, excited to get it started and off the ground. Staff, as always, does a great job presenting it, so we're available for any questions you may have.
Okay.
Mr. Frac...
Mr. Mayor?
Hello, I haven't seen you in a long time.
It's been a while.
I noticed that, um, the, um, site plan calls for eight hundred and sixty parking spaces, and, um, only seven hundred and seventeen are required. Have you thought about land banking, some of that? I mean, it seems like an awful lot of parking.
We, the parking was driven by the tenant's request, uh, and, uh, although we are in excess of the code, I still think we meet the, uh, the buffer factor of twenty percent.
Right.
They, um, the trend in their industry is to populate this building, um, pretty densely, and they anticipate significant growth. They're on a hiring spree, um, they feel, uh, they characterize their business, uh, they tell people they're in the business of saving lives, and the electronics group of Auto Liv is this, is the particular group that'll go in here, and, uh, they really, uh, they have a problem with parking right now, uh, so they want to make sure they do not have a, a problem with parking in the future.
And if I could, through the chair, to the mayor, um, we, we were conscientious of, of the amount of parking, it is under our twenty percent maximum threshold. What I do want to point out for the council is that they have more than twice the, um, amount of green space that's required on the site.
Okay.
So, the balance here is, yes, they're above the minimum, the trends in office is to have close to six persons per thousand square feet, our parking standards, which we reduce to, uh, help encourage less impervious services in, in the four range, but the fact that they have twice the amount of green space and that they're still under the twenty percent maximum threshold, we were comfortable with that.
Okay. It's just, it's, uh, kind of rare to see a proposal come forward with this much overage, usually they're close or slightly under, uh, the parking required, so, thank you for the explanation.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Fracassi?
Yeah, the, the site plan committee met with this, and I, I believe to answer the mayor, I think, uh, it's gonna be automotive research also. I think that parking lot is needed for other, just permanent parking.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Brightwell?
And, uh, this, this did come before site plan, I, I did have a question with, with respect to, this is perhaps not project-specific, but down the road, just, you know, can we get some, um, perhaps, uh, wayfinding for the, for the park that's down the road, Pebble Creek, that, that is...
Yeah, if I, if I could explain, what came up was, um, with this building now being located across from the entrance where Pebble Creek, um, we talked about the SMART Zone and that there was gonna be a branding and wayfinding program, but possibly, um, through the city administrator, and I, I spoke with Ms. Freeman about enhancing the entrance to Pebble Creek earlier than later. Their, their tenants said that, um, at their existing facility, they like to walk to the park, and it would give more ambiance through landscaping and creating a gateway, and I think that was your, your comment as well.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, Mr. Frazier, I just, I wanted to add something else, uh, besides the parking. It's, uh, Frank, it's a gorgeous building, um, really, uh, very, very attractive, I think it's a great addition, uh, to the city, and of course, we're thrilled to keep Auto Liv here and, uh, even bring some people from Farmington, so, congratulations.
And they have multiple facilities, and there were multiple cities competing for this project, and we're very proud and happy that they selected Southfield.
Mm-hmm. And if you could just address, um, very briefly, the stormwater retention was originally designed, um, built for larger capacity for this development, if you could touch on that real quick.
Again, uh, when we acquired this property many years ago, it was a seventy-acre master parcel, uh, only fifty acres of it has been developed, and the other twenty acres is a combination nature preserve, uh, stormwater management facility that serves the entire park. Um, it's got a, a, a walking path that goes through it, it's been, uh, the source of many, uh, types of wildlife, and we're, we're very happy that that's part of this association, so there's a condominium association umbrella that handles the maintenance of that facility. And, uh, all of the stormwater that is discharged from this site will be contributed to that, uh, stormwater management facility and hopefully enhance, uh, the wet, further enhance the wetland, uh, species and habitat.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing I wanted to mention.
Okay.
And that'd be to the administrator, uh, when I looked at this piece of property... And that'd be to the administrator, uh, when I looked at this piece of property, Fred, um, CBS, I think it's CBS in there, isn't it, Frank?
CBS.
Across the street?
Yes.
Uh, you know, their cars, the parking lot comes right up to the road that take, that goes American Way into the park. If we could talk them into giving up a couple of parking spots, CBS and I don't know who's, who's the other office building there, but they could do something to widen that entrance way to give it, you know, some acknowledgement that there's something there, rather than you just come to a little narrow tra- trail, and that takes you all the way back and around. But it has nothing to do with his development at all. Anyway, I just mentioned it.
Anything else? Okay, council?
The Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Site Plan PSP one seven dash zero 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 five.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve PSP one seven dash zero 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 five.
If I could, um, just want to remind the council in our packet, this is subject to them receiving a waiver for the landscaping setback, which is scheduled for tomorrow night.
Okay, and, uh, there are a bunch of conditions on here that have to, that you have to meet too, so, and I'm sure you agreed to them.
We're well aware of it.
Okay. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is Kerry. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much. We look forward to this being a very successful project for Auto-Liv and for the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Kerry, this is all yours.
Okay, we have a number of people that asked to, to communicate. Uh, the first one is Mr. Scott Riley. If you'll come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yeah.
Kerry, here's another one, too.
Clock's gonna start pretty quick, so you only have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm Scott Riley. Uh, my mailing address is P.O. Box three five nine two, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh three seven. Uh, today, we are using our U.S. citizenship to speak for people who don't have a voice, the non-citizens and their families in Southfield. They live under the threat of potentially being deported. This is a reality that is unimaginable to us. I used to hear back in the sixties, if they don't like it here, ship them all back to Africa. It was a laughable, ridiculous threat. That racist thinking is now being acted on via federal government's ICE deportation machine. Since March, Southfield residents, who are ACLU volunteers, have been engaging with Southfield city officials. We ask that the city codify nine policies suggested by the ACLU. These policies are intended to limit Southfield City employees involv- involvement with immigration law enforcement. We appreciate that Mayor Cyver sponsored these discussions. We also appreciate the time everyone set aside to hear us out. In April, Southfield City Government issued Welcoming City Resolution. The resolution states that the city of Southfield commits to institutionalizing welcoming efforts through the adoption of policies that promote inclusion. The clear intent of the resolution is to have immigrants and refugees understand that the city of Southfield will protect them to the full extent allowed under the law. The codification of the ACLU suggested nine policies that I just delivered has stalled. This stalling allows police and city to prioritize cooperation with immigration authorities so that they can avoid upsetting the federal government. This is completely incongruent with the Welcoming City Resolution. Immigrants who have not completed the full path to citizenship are now at risk of trusting the Welcoming City Resolution that is not fully legally supported. We feel that you are ignoring what the twentieth century taught us over and over. Accommodating racists only emboldens them. This presentation is a formal public plea that you, our representatives, show the courage that other cities have shown and codify the protections that the ACLU has proposed. If not, then end the hypocrisy and publicly rescind the Welcoming City Resolution. Thank you.
Um, there was supposed to be a, uh, response to your, your comments?
Which I never got.
From Mr. Cruz, uh, he's ill this evening, uh, so I'm gonna ask our city attorney.
It, it was my understanding that a response from the Legislative Committee was going to be sent. I don't know if it was or not, but?
Was not.
Okay, so, in general, this, this is what my understanding of, of the position of the Legislative Committee, um, consisted of. The Legislative Committee of the Southfield City Council has carefully reviewed the request of the ACLU for its support in adopting the nine ACLU law enforcement policies and rules relative to immigration promulgated by the ACLU. Although in principle, we agree with the substance of the protocols identified within the nine policies, because of the uncertainty in how the judicial system will ultimately rule with respect to Executive Order Number one three seven six eight that was issued by President Trump on January twenty-fifth of this year, um, including potentially in a review and determination of the constitutionality of the executive order by the United States Supreme Court, which by its terms denies federal funding to local jurisdictions that violate USC one three seven three, or otherwise have in effect a statute, a policy, a practice that prevents or hinders the enforcement of federal law and authorizes the United States Attorney General to take enforcement actions against those local jurisdictions. It is the position of the Legislative Committee that we would not support formal adoption of the nine policies at this time. The city of Southfield relies heavily upon receipt of federal funding to address a wide variety of municipal concerns, including roads and transportation, employment and training, and public safety, and the Legislative Committee does not feel it prudent at this time to adopt policies that may jeopardize or impede in any manner the city's ability to garner those vital federal funds. As previously discussed with you, the Southfield Police Department has implemented many of the protocols contained in the nine policies, and in addition, the city of Southfield has formally adopted a resolution establishing itself as a welcoming city. We appreciate the efforts of the ACLU in bringing this matter forward for our consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next person to ask for recognition is Mr. Harold Hill. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Oh, I cleared the house. Um, my name is Harold Hill. I'm a proud resident of Southfield for twenty-seven years, and so I feel compelled to, uh, speak out about something, a couple things. I noticed the council was very, very good at reacting to certain concerns or problems. But, like problem fifteen seventy-one, the sewers tying into the sewer systems, um, the clerk's salary, uh, being lower for the new clerk, and acquiring fifty foreclosed homes, um, that there's coming up. But, this continuous practice could possibly cause the city a lot financially if you don't look proactively into some things. They don't have to show up in the city council with those kind of concerns, just a little more proactive thinking. I love the city, and I don't want, I wanted to go move forward, so that's why I'm bringing this to you. And case in point is, I went to the Compensation Comm- Commission's, uh, meeting, and I found out that it's not the council's concern, direct concern, it's, uh, direct reports to the mayor. But, I was kind of interested in finding out that they don't have a human resources person heading that department. I mean, I know it's a volunteer physician, that's pointed, but it seems as though with that type of position for compensation, which is very important, that determines a person's livelihood, this day and age, formalized systems need to be in place, and it would be very helpful if they had an HR person, because it could be costly down the road. Um, but then again, I've noticed, as a matter of fact, the city administrator mentioned June nineteenth, that the codes, or the charter, excuse me, haven't been upgraded in sixty years. This is the tw- twenty-first century. Even mentioned, it needs to be updated. Those need to be updated. It can't, you can't think that you're gonna move the city forward without upgrading some kind of information. It's the twenty-first century. So, a couple of other things that I just wanted to bring up. Um, well, as a business owner, I'm, I'm bringing these things up to you because I have had a business for, well, past ten years, and with a business degree. Proactive thinking really does help move the city forward. This is a dynamic city, and doing things instead of reacting is very helpful, very, very much so. So, I had a question about the city center. The city center was purchased, I guess, I'm not sure exactly how much, two million, three million, somewhere in that area. Usually, in business, you do a feasibility study before you buy something, and then you have an idea of what you want to do with it, and that is very helpful, because then you understand...
Time's up.
Oh, okay. Sorry, my name is Harold Hill.
Thank you. The next person to ask for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I want to thank, uh, Harold Hill and all of the residents that came to that local officer's Compensation Commission meeting. Uh, there was an attempt to dupe and bamboozle the residents in the city of Southfield by committing what I'm going to call a racial injustice. Um, I want to thank the, uh, AM talk show, AM talk shows and the FM talk shows for allowing me the form to talk about this issue on the radio, to the point that a lot of residents contacted me, asked me about the issue, came to the meeting, and also came to the council meeting to ask about this issue. One thing that disappointed me in this local officer's Compensation Commission is that the chairman, who's been on this commission for forty years, was not familiar with this document here called the Open Meetings Act, and it's a very condensed handbook version put out by the Attorney General's Office for the state of Michigan. I was even more appalled that the city clerk, after eighteen years of being on the job, and she's done some amazing things, was not aware of the fact that a resident or anybody attending the meeting could record the meeting. And it was also insulting to have a clerk to offer to take my personal phone, which would have returned, you know, which would have resulted into a different matter had you touched my pro- you know, my property trying to take it from me. But, I had to read this, um, with the chairman, and it says, "Taping and Broadcasting." The right to attend a public meeting includes the right to tape, record, videotape, broadcast live, on radio, and telecast live on television, the proceedings of a public body at a public meeting. A board should establish reasonable regulations regarding the televis- televising and filming by the electronic media of a hearing open to the public in order to minimize any disruption to the hearing, but it may not prohibit such coverage, and the exercise of the right to tape, record, videotape, and broadcast public meetings may not be dependent upon prior approval of the public body. I think if you're going to get volunteers from the community that don't have experience with such legal documents or knowledge, it should be up to the city clerk, since you are the FOIA and the facilitator of the Open Meetings Act, to educate these people. Stop appointing these people on these boards and commissions, and they don't understand the parliamentarian process on how to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, your time's up.
Thank you, I beat the time.
Next person that, to ask for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, at the last council meeting, I pointed out that the Southfield Local Officers Compensation Commission had agreed on September twelfth to cut the salary of the incoming city clerk by fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. That is fourteen thousand five hundred dollars less than the current city clerk, while concurrently raising the pay of the mayor and of the city council. The city attorney rejected the Commission's September twelfth determination because of a legal error caused by the members of the Commission, who blindly signed two different and conflicting determinations. In a word, they screwed up. So, in mid-September, the Commission was forced to add an additional meeting to take place on Thursday, October nineteenth. As you may recall, at the last council meeting, I asked that everyone who could attend to attend this public meeting. And to my great surprise, a lot of people showed up, and thus, the Commission wisely reversed themselves under the light of public scrutiny by putting the clerk's salary back to ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Another victory for the good guys. I believe that ninety percent of life is showing up, and showed up, you folks did. I, along with my wife, Pamela Gerald, would like to thank all the people who took the time to show up and to help rectify what would otherwise have been an injustice. Thank you.
The next person that asked for recognition is Mr. Charlie Gilliam. If you'd come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Gilliam, precinct, uh, Delegated Lake Eighteen, Southfield, Michigan, Post Office Box two four four three, uh, Southfield. Um, July nineteen forty-five, a Navy seaplane passed high in the sky, just happened to, apologies, just happened to look down, and he said, uh, sailors and marines in the water everywhere. Just five days earlier, the Navy ship Indianapolis sunk in nineteen forty-five at midnight, and it went down in ten minutes. It's, just imagine, midnight, you had enough time, get your shoes on, get a light preserver in, and pitch, pitch black and jump in that water. Well, well, those relatives were in shock and fisted waters for five days. It was top secret, nobody knew they were there. They did their mission, but there was only way back home. By accident, this, uh, seaplane happened to spot them. In the nineteen, um, fifty, right around, right around nineteen fifty, where I was born, they were doing more experimenting on that, that, uh, that secret weapon they had, and, uh, they wanted to keep the spectators away, so they got, um, soldiers and, and put them, uh, about a mile from the secret weapon, and told them to get in trenches, and they, um, they tested the weapon. And, um, I was talking to one of my relatives not too long ago, asking about the war, and he said he, he can't talk about it. He said when his two years was up during the war, they kept him another six months. And so, um, I, I said, "Why?" He said they wouldn't let him go home. And so, he kept that secret to his death. I didn't, I didn't know what was going on. But, um, the reason I'm, I'm bringing all this is, this is up, it's one thing about Southfield, city of Southfield. Our veterans, you got these big mega cities around here right now. Guys got two, three cars in the driveway playing golf, but on Veterans Day this year, November ninth, right here at eleven o'clock? November ninth, right here at eleven o'clock, our, my, our city council, they don't try to cut no funds off of this. They honor our veterans, that's their day. So many have paid the price and they should be honored. They should be honored for what they've done. A lot of them, they can't even tell what they've done in the war. It's top secret. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that asked for recognition is Mr. Roberta Kotman. Be left? That concludes the communications portion of our agenda. Uh, next item on our agenda is council. Any council, uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Couple items on a, uh, deal with veterans. The VA hospital is looking for volunteers to serve as drivers. Uh, they're starting a new service, a new, uh, line from Detroit to Ann Arbor, uh, Ann Arbor VA. And if you're interested, uh, obviously you had to have a nice, uh, driving record and also they will give you training, they will provide the vehicles and they will provide the gas, uh, but you would have, obviously have to have a, um, clean, valid driver's license. The number will be three one three five seven six three 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 two to express your The famed on, that is an open, uh, with, with the VA, that, that is open, uh, up until, I assume they, they fulfill all the, uh, seats that they, that they have open. Keith Feimy, uh, on October the twenty-sixth, he's a famous, a famed, famous local producer and, um, director of military films. He will be offering his premiere of his latest military film called Enlisted on the twenty-sixth at the Imagine Theater in Roaring Oak. Uh, starting time will be seven PM and the price will be twelve dollars, admission price. But Keith is a real famed, uh, local producer of military films. And as I mentioned last time, the, oh, and another thing, this, this particular movie is being, uh, sponsored by the Michigan Veterans Foundation, the Vietnam Veterans Foundation and American House, plus others. As I mentioned last time, on, on not, on October the twenty-eighth, the U of M Dearborn will host a female veteran stand down at their campus in Dearborn, nineteen thousand Hubbard Drive. The veteran stand down is when, uh, they, they, in essence, they, they assist individuals who, who are having trouble with society and are assisting them with, uh, their home, their, their, um, personal life. Could be taxes, legal advice and also, uh, places that, that one can get help. Um, and a couple of weeks ago, I, uh, one of my neighbors and a couple of the constituents asked me about the process and I might, uh, I'm on, I just gave them my one year and ten my understanding of how things once they reach, uh, the consent agenda stage of the city council. Uh, this popped up, uh, one of our council members indicated that we could not enforce something that had been, uh, gotten to the consent agenda stage of the council. Uh, a couple of my neighbors asked me, how does that happen? Kind of saying, get there, you cannot enforce. And, um, and a couple of other constituents asked me the same thing in a roundabout way. Um, and I'm gonna use the term neighbors because the Michigan Municipal League now suggests that we use the term neighbors when we are talking about constituents. But anyway, the, for the individual who, uh, who are out there, my, uh, most issues that reached the consent agenda stage has been thoroughly discussed during our committee of the whole meeting, has been discussed, has been vetted, um, and it's been turned upside down, left and right typically. And we have a very able city attorney and I just said to, uh, my, our audience here that I've heard Mrs. Ward's, uh, voice a couple of times, it would pop up and say, you cannot do that, you can't do that. So I, that, that is kind of embedded in me. Uh, I don't have the right, her tone of it, but that's in essence, that, that's what is being said. Uh, so the, for the individuals and also, you know, maybe this, this basic civic class here about consent agenda in the city of Southfield and, and the city council. Rest assured, once it reaches this particular stage and it's on the consent agenda, it is legal, it's lawful, it's impactful, it can be, um, implemented and it, um, a hundred percent enforceable. So with that, um, that's, Mr. Chair.
That's it?
Yeah.
Ms. Taylor?
Uh, thank you. I wanted to, two things. First of all, I know that we've already heard about the meeting on Wednesday. I just wanted to reinforce that to encourage everyone to come out for that meeting at Levy Middle School regarding the sewer. It's very informative, it's very important and it's free. Uh, it's information that we've been looking for, for a long time and I hope that, uh, everyone that had a concern, please come out on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth at six thirty for, to Levy Middle School. Also, I wanted to say thank you to John Adams and all the volunteers who worked the Emanuel Community Farm. They donated over two thousand pounds of fresh produce to the Forgotten Harvest this year. So I wanted to say thank you for your hard work and for all your healthy foods. And, uh, lastly, I, the comment came about, um, the Opens Meetings Acts and I think that that should be a part of all of our boards and commissions, a part of our training. I know when I served on the boards and commissions that, uh, it was brought up to me, we reviewed it and, and we talked about how the meetings were gonna go and how to, you know, to make a vote and all those kinds of things. So I think training is very important and I think that, I don't know if we still do that, but I know we were doing it before. So that's something, we invite the public to come to these boards, they're all volunteers. Uh, educating them on how the meeting process goes is, is fine. I don't know if that's something that's currently going on, if, or whose responsibility that is. I just know that it happened for me when I was on the boards and commissions and I think that's something that, uh, we should continue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Mattlebaum?
Thank you. Um, in response to Councilwoman Taylor, um, last year when I was at the MML conference, there were several discussions regarding boards and commissions and volunteers in the city as it relates to training them on different things, you know, ethics policies, Open Meetings Act, um, agenda, you know, the normal, um, items that you would go through in, in a meeting. And there were a couple of programs that we looked at, um, that we're still looking at and we hope to continue, um, to bring something forward to the full council, um, that are very simple training tools for the volunteers to go through the different, um, the different aspects of running a meeting, setting an agenda and things like that. So it's coming shortly.
Thank you.
Keep your seatbelt on. Some other things that I wanted to, um, talk about, I know that we had a, a presentation earlier this evening about the, uh, United Nations and the Southfield will be hosting our international festival on November eighteenth and nineteenth from twelve to six Saturday and Sunday here in the pavilion. Um, every year they try to enhance it a little bit more, so hopefully this year it will be wonderful. The Greg Kennedy Award, um, applications are due by November first. The Greg Kennedy Award was established, um, to, to award a deserving citizen, uh, citizen who goes above and beyond the call of duty. Um, it is vetted through our Total Living Commission and then presented at a, uh, city council meeting usually in December, um, or January. And even if, uh, someone's, someone's name is submitted and there's several nominations, that person may not win because it is a very difficult award and the city, um, the committee that reviews the applications are very thorough and strict. So those applications, you could pick one up in the Neighborhood Services Center, um, are due by November first. Starting on November first, the Parks and Rec Department will be, uh, starting their Ride With Santa contest. Can't believe we're already talking about Santa, um, in October, but they will be starting their contest, you can call the Parks and Rec Department for more information about that. Our police department is doing a unique program from now through November third, they're doing something called Diapers for the D. They are collecting packaged diapers that will be distributed to our Southfield Human Services Department and to Haven, um, for those who need diapers. So there will be collection bins set up at the police department and, uh, I encourage anyone, if you have anything left lying around, like I do, uh, to drop them off at the police department, uh, from now through November third. Lastly, um, as everyone's heard in the news, Southfield has put in a, a bid for the Amazon HQ two and Southfield put together a wonderful video that you can view on our website, cityofsouthfield.com. It's, uh, right there on the homepage, uh, Amazon headlines or Amazon proposal. There's a wonderful video that talks about the city of Southfield. While it does focus on the Northland property, it does show a lot about Southfield in general overall and what a wonderful community we are. So thank you to whichever departments put that together, um, and I would encourage everyone to take a look at that. Thank you, have a great evening.
Anyone else? Uh, seeing no one else, uh, Mr. Mayor?
It's been mentioned, uh, several times this evening, um, but I did want to, um, reiterate that on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at six thirty PM, Levy Middle School, we're going to have the Sewer Septic System and Well Forum. And to elaborate on that, um, uh, our key speaker will be Chris Sternad from Oakland County Health Division, he's the chief sanitarian and he'll be, um, providing information for residents. And this forum, anybody's welcome to attend, but this forum is particularly for those residents that are still on well water or not connected to city sewer. And he will be presenting information on, uh, the care of these systems as well as getting well, well water tested. Our stormwater, uh, manager, Brandy Setalack, will be speaking on the environmental issues, um, regarding, um, the, um, uh, septic fields and systems. Um, our Public Works Director, Larry Searls, will talk, will present the cost analysis. One of the things that we're finding is that, uh, people assume that, uh, it's very, and it is, can be very expensive to connect to city sewer, but at the same time, replacement of a, a leach field for a septic system as well as the septic tank, um, is, is fairly costly as well and a resident needs to make an informed decision whether to go on city sewer or repair, uh, a septic system. So we'll have information on that. Our, uh, city administrator will be presenting, um, along with, um, Rick Lampy, our housing specialist, uh, our loan programs, our three percent program as well as, um, what was passed by or approved by council tonight, the Eligible Income, uh, Program, uh, for people who qualify at certain income levels for, um, uh, financing. But both of these programs are only for connecting, uh, well to city water or, uh, septic to city sewer. And then, um, we also had promised residents that we would, uh, look into group pricing. Uh, so we have some information to present on that as well as, um, an updated list of contractors. There was resident concerns about, um, some of the contractors that were on the list. So we have, uh, I would call it a new and improved list of contractors. So again, that's, that's Wednesday evening, Levy Middle School, um, and we did send out invitations to the people that we know are, um, on septic systems. Secondly, um, I want to repeat that, uh, we're, um, getting close to the big rake once again and, uh, we have an appeal out for, uh, people to volunteer. Lowe's and Home Depot have provided a thousand bags, uh, for us, um, uh, yard waste bags. Uh, we have, um, uh, I don't know, seventy-five or so rakes being lent to us, uh, for these Saturdays, November fourth, eleventh and eighteenth and possibly December second. Uh, and, uh, for, um, this program is principally for, um, vacant lots or handicapped or elderly who can't physically rake their own leaves. And you can contact my office, uh, to sign up either as a volunteer or for the service. And then, um, my last, uh, announcement, uh, council, uh, every day gets the, um, uh, crime significant activity report from the police department. And you may remember that on October twentieth, um, there was an, um, a, our Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, that's the TCSU, um, made us, uh, tried to, attempted to stop, uh, a car at Nine Mile and Telegraph. The driver of that car, uh, sped off down, uh, Nine Mile and went into, um, Farmington Hills and was finally stopped by, uh, Southfield Police Department officers in a pit maneuver. And those officers were, uh, it was a team effort. Um, it was Jeremy Pansky and I, I want to recognize these officers, Jeremy Pansky, David McCormitt, Trevor Elliott, Cole Armel and Eric Nelson, as well as Sergeant Blake Metetal. Um, and, um, again, this was, was sort of a routine thing, we, um, we expect our officers to do that. But what you don't know, um, the next day I got a call from the, uh, mayor of Farmington Hills, Dr. Ken Massey, who told me that, uh, one of the three, uh, persons arrested and, um, they will be charged with eluding, uh, the police in Southfield, but, uh, has confessed to fourteen armed robberies in Farmington Hills. So this was a tremendous, um, bust, um, and we're, um, appreciative of the officer's good work as well as hearing from Farmington, the other part of this, uh, this arrest. And while I'm talking about the police department, uh, we've had a number of retirements in our police department, but we have hired sixteen officers this year. Um, we're, we still have vacancies in the police department, so if someone wants to, um, apply, uh, there, uh, there are positions open. And, um, finally, uh, we have three, uh, three firefighters, um, beginning work, uh, to fill vacancies in the fire department and we have, continue to have openings, uh, in the fire department. So, um, I know I've heard from people about staffing levels in both these departments, but the city is actively recruiting both firefighters and, and police officers, um, and it takes a bit to get through the, through the pipeline, um, and of course there's training involved. But either contact, uh, the police or fire department, uh, or go online and at our human resources, uh, um, site, uh, city of Southfield website. Uh, thank you, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, uh, the, um, city did submit, uh, as part of the Detroit Windsor Amazon project, we were part of that project and just want to comment, it was, uh, very, uh, enlightening to see that degree of cooperation within the region. Uh, you know, I think the media has rightfully, uh, covered on one of Michigan's larger challenges and that's a talent challenge, but buried within the appendix of the, uh, proposal was a step-up program and it looks like a Marshall program for the state of Michigan to assist with producing that level of talent that would be driven by Amazon. There are many of us who are now talking with or without Amazon, we need to be pursuing that level of talent. The number one comment we have from our employers in town is we can't find the qualified people we need. And it was amazing, I saw a couple of the universities what their summits were and they... the amount of excess capacity they have in producing engineers, computer programmers, logistic managers, and it was really a neat exercise to see our public universities, as well as our private universities, go through that exercise. And I think in the next few months, you're going to hear a greater push as we wait to hear what Amazon says about the proposals. We'll comment, there were 55 metropolitan areas that were eligible. They only wanted one proposal per metropolitan area, and 238 proposals were received. So a good number of communities are simply going to be rejected because they could not come together in a unified front. The focus of the proposal is on downtown Detroit, and the, we, we showed in our end, pretty much the entire mall site, 125 acres under single ownership, as the north end, seven minutes from the north end of the Q line. So we're in it, we're running the race. I think it, it'll be an exciting time, but the degree of cooperation for the region, in my 30 years, I think the only time I've seen this come this close was for the Super Bowl, what was done back for Super Bowl XL. So we're excited about the opportunity. If you get a chance, see the video, very upbeat. Southfield really shines in it, and then the Northland site, the history and the possibility there are truly awesome. Excited, tonight's action will move towards demolition, and it may start as soon as Thursday morning. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Just a few reminders, that we have an election coming up on November 7th. The polls will open 7 o'clock in the morning and be closed at 8 o'clock PM. If anyone is wondering about the candidates, the League of Women Voters did conduct a candidates forum, and it is airing on our cable television station. Also, you can go to the League of Women Voters website. They have asked all the various candidates different questions, and I encourage you to read what some of the candidates have said, and maybe that will help you to make a decision as to who you think is going to best represent you in our city. On Saturday, November 4th, the city clerk's office will be open from 9 o'clock in the morning until 2 o'clock in the afternoon for absent voter ballots. And then, on Monday, November 6th, it will be the last day that absentee ballots can be issued over our counter. They have to be voted here at City Hall, and it's only up until 4 o'clock PM. When everyone goes to the polls this year, they will see new voting equipment. The equipment was selected by the Oakland County Clerk. It's a heart system, and it's very similar to our old system, but you're going to be entering your ballot into a computer, and the computer will tell you whether your ballot has been received or not. And if you have successfully voted correctly, the American flag will display and say thank you. So hopefully, everyone will enjoy this new voting system that we now have throughout Oakland County. Thank you.
Treasurer?
I just want to take the opportunity to wish Nancy Banks much success in her retirement. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service to the city of Southfield, and I know that you've put a lot of work into the elections and everything, and so, thank you for everything, and it's been a pleasure working alongside of you, and we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Planner? He's gone. Assessor? He's not here. Engineer? Not here. We have nothing to schedule? We have no ordinances? Is there anything else to come for, before the council? Mr. Mandelbaum?
Sorry, I have one more announcement. This Friday, October 27th, at 11:30 AM, we are having a ribbon cutting for our new play equipment, or the play area renovation at the Pebble Creek Park. Anyone who's been to that park over the last few years know that it definitely needed a little TLC, but they have completed that renovation, and this Friday, 11:30, at Pebble Creek, there will be a ribbon cutting. I hope to see everyone there, and I'll be going down the slides. Thank you.
The last thing I'd like to say this evening is, Nancy, it's been a wonderful trip, working with you since 1999, when you got, when you were first elected. We've been over some bumpy roads, some smooth roads, but you and I have grown to know each other, and I appreciate all the help that you've given me, because even though I knew it all started out, you showed me what I didn't know. So congratulations on you going into retirement, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. With that, means adjourned.